I'll call the order the September 12th, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, can we do the roll call?
Yes, Vice Chair West. First, our staff support today. County Council, Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board, Andrew Giraki. Chair Smith and Commissioner Savis are both out of the office today due to family reasons. They're okay, but they're both out today. There is a quorum present. With that, roll call. Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Vice Chair West.
Here. Please rise as I'll lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We're holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined by Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Thank you for being here today. And Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Vice Chair West. First is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item A: Elected Officials. Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes, Board of County Commissioners. Item B: Juvenile. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Lynn County Juvenile Department for Emergency Fee-for-Service Juvenile Detention Beds. Agreement value is $255,500 for two years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. B2: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Northern Oregon Regional Correctional Facility for Emergency Fee-for-Service Juvenile Detention Beds. Agreement value is $285,120 for two years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. B3: Approval of Amendment Number One to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for Expunction of Juvenile Records. Amendment value is $211,098 and 20 cents and two years. Agreement value has increased to $452,706 and 60 cents for four years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item C1: Approval of Amendment Number Seven Extending the Term and Increasing Funding to an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for Ambulance Services. Amendment value is $153,305 and 28 cents for 12 months. Total agreement value increased to $1,278,824 and 69 cents for 12 years. Funding is through the Cost Savings Program with American Medical Response Northwest. No county general funds are involved. Item C2: Approval Amendment Number Three Extending the Term and Increasing Funding of an Intergovernmental Revenue Agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for Medical Direction Services. Amendment value is $72,000 for 12 months. Agreement value increased to $288,000 for four years. No county general funds are involved. Item C3: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Transcending Hope for the Operations and Supportive Services of the Temporary and Transitional Behavioral Health Housing Program. Contract value is $369,176 and 60 cents for 10 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. C4: Approval of a Federal Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Cascadia Health for Residential Treatment Services. Agreement value is $115,000 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. C5: Approval of a Federal Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Columbia Care Services Incorporated for Residential Treatment Services. Agreement value is $555,000 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval Amendment Number Six to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Financing of Community Health, Mental Health, Addiction, Treatment, Recovery and Prevention and Problem Gambling Services. Amendment value is $2,000 for three months. Agreement value increased to $17,566,033 and 35 cents for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. C7: Approval of a Revenue Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Participation in the Alternative Payment Methodology and Advanced Care Model Program. Estimated total value is $9,600,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. C8: Approval Amendment Number Two Increasing the Value of a Cooperation Agreement with Clackamas Service Center for the West Building Expansion Project. Amendment value is $250,000 for approximately two months. Agreement value has increased to $1,200,000 for approximately three years. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. C9: Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Housing Our Families Program. Agreement value is $223,000 for one year. Funding is through a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant with Match Funding of $50,451 from the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services and $2,630 of budgeted county general funds. C10: Approval Amendment Number One to an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Older Americans Act and Oregon Project Independence. Amendment value is $1,389,376 and 55 cents for three years. Agreement value has increased to $9,552,196 and 55 cents for five years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the State of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. C11: Approval Amendment Number One to a Subrecipient Agreement with the Senior Citizens Council of Clackamas County for Older Adult Services. Amendment value is $179,550 for one year. Agreement value increased to $350,550 for two years. Funding is through the Federal Older Americans Act and $99,965 of budgeted county general funds. C12: Approval of Amendment Number One to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Health and Human Services for the Oregon Senior Medicare Patrol State Project Grant for Medicare Consumer Education. Amendment value is $19,500 for one year. Agreement value is $38,000 for two years. No county general funds are involved. Item D1: Approval of a Supplemental Project Authorization with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Conway Creek at Ashoff Road Culvert Replacement. Total agreement value is $1,862,900. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Transportation Culvert Aquatic Organism Passage Program and County Road Funds. No county general funds are involved. T2: Approval to Quick Claim of Permanent Easement for Road Purposes to Oregon Department of Transportation. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. D3: Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with One Way Trigger LLC for the 2024 Asphalt Rubber Cape Seal Package. Total value is $588,147 and 80 cents. Funding is through County House Bill 2017 Funds. No county general funds are involved. Vice Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you so much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Martha Schrader has made a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. We have a second from Commissioner Scholl. Can we take the poll? Clerk?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. I will now recess as the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors.
Next is the Consent Agenda for the Development Agency of Clackamas County. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item A: Approval of a Funding Agreement with Convaco Manufacturing Company for the Installation of Gates on Clackamas Road. Total value is $50,000 for one year. Funding through Clackamas Industrial Area Funds. No county general funds are involved. Vice Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Does any Director wish to remove any items off this Consent Agenda? The one that there is? I don't see any. I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Scholl, and then it's been seconded by Director Schrader. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Clerk, let's take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Motion passes 3-0. I will now adjourn as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. What is up next?
Next is Public Communication, Vice Chair.
Wow. Okay, we are flying. Very efficient.
Ludicrous speed.
This baseball's reference is awesome. This is local government working efficiently. We like that. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of the Board's consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revise Statute and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communications at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first, and then we will go to Zoom if there is anybody on Zoom to testify virtually. Now Clerk, will you please moderate the public communication via Zoom? And let's see. I have two blue cards in front of me. And do we have anybody on Zoom to prepare? We will? Okay, perfect. So we'll start with the in-person testimony first. I don't know which order, so we're just gonna... Brian, do you want to come on up? Identify yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes to testify.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Brainerd Brower. I run Redland Station, the gas station in Redland. I live at Lyons Road in Oregon City. Here today in regards to health, housing, human services, underage retail decoy program. Just reading from what I provided you. Public servants are generally nice and articulate. My visit yesterday by Clackamas County Health, Housing and Human Services was no exception. It had involved conversation, including about how underage enforcement was promised would not include decoys with makeup, et cetera, to look older than natural. A person came in, we had a conversation, talked about everything. And I get pretty engaged in conversations. This is something I've been involved with. I've been on committee for the county for tobacco license and all that kind of stuff. I don't even like to support tobacco, but it's part of my business. I specifically asked, since we work so hard to comply. Then I was told that my staff member had sold tobacco to a 19-year-old. I wondered how? We have registers and all kinds of stuff. My senior staff member then also told me something about this seemed to miss. When leaving, I went out to the car in my parking lot and saw the person who was the decoy, for the curiosity resulting in astonishment. Saying we allow a person to dress themselves is not likely consistent with Oregon law enforcement and OLCC for underage decoy. Hiring someone to be effective at entrapment is clearly allowing them to dress and make up themselves to get the job. This decoy person had significant makeup, dressed as an executive secretary to look immediately older. I was just like floored, and large gold-framed glasses. I was simply shocked to see how this person looked the age of 30 to me. But I was not allowed to see her directly. She was in the car. I was simply shocked to see how this person looked at the age of 30. Ibrainerd Brower has a saying that goes, "Public servants are many times not the brightest amongst us, and it's okay. The brightest amongst us are not as bright as we are together." This inspector presents as a wonderful and thoughtful person. We need to work together for the common good. Build trust. Abuse of authority in public service hurts all our confidence in public service. I keep asking people, "What have you done to influence improvements to public service in government?" We each have a responsibility to constructively work forward to improving confidence in government at all levels cooperatively. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a copy of these, Gary, these comments?
Yes.
So these will also be on the record, your written comments?
Yes, I have a copy for each of you.
Yeah, and you have a little bit of time. Do you have anything else or context you'd like to add to your statement?
I take this entire topic very seriously. We work so hard, we have all kinds of systems in place. You know, we have never had any issue of selling to somebody underage, and we take very careful about that. So this is, to me, astonishingly clear entrapment. You know, and I have yet to check with OLCC and stuff and see exactly how they do it. But I've always been told, it's, you know, somebody looks natural.
Gary, is there a way to maybe offline help with the situation and communicate and try to find a good solution to his?
Yes, happy to have staff.
And it's also a new program in the county through the Health Department. So it's kind of, I don't know.
Is this a state requirement, not a county requirement? But we'll check with our staff to see what happened. And of course, we want to be respectful. We'll check with our staff. But with respect, Mr. Brainerd, did your staff check the ID of that person?
I wasn't there exactly. So they looked at the ID. They're extremely experienced. They've actually come with to testify, so you can ask directly.
We will look into it further.
All right, I appreciate that. And then it looks like I have a... Commissioner Schrader, did you want to say something?
Do you mind, Mark?
Mine was on, was yours on? Oh, sorry. I'm confused. Mark was first, and then we'll come to you. Commissioner Schrader.
We've switched spaces.
Yeah.
And our lights are all different. So, good morning, Mr. Brower. Just to clarify, this person was a county employee or state?
That's what I was going to ask.
Alcohol, tobacco?
County employee.
It was a county employee.
County employee as inspector, working for Health, Housing and Human Services, underage retail, whatever program is. And they were the one who represented that they hired the decoy person. But they were very explicit about saying, "We allow them to dress themselves." And that was after... Before that, I had this nice conversation with her, and I never knew about the program, so we were just talking about the program and everything before she said anything about this happening. And I was very specific. I said, "No, you're not going to be sending people out that are made up to look older, you know, not tricking us, right?" And it was very clear, no, they weren't going to do that. But they always said, "Well, but we allow them to dress themselves."
Was there a fine involved, Mr. Brower?
They didn't tell me.
Okay.
They just said, "We'll send you a letter in a week or two, and we can't tell you," and it's just kind of very vague.
And one more time, this decoy person, you think, was an employee of H3S?
That's how it was represented, yes. Directly represented that the inspector was the one who actually hired her.
Well, we can ask the county administrator to look into it and come up with the facts.
It's new to me, so I don't know.
Yeah, we can figure it out and get back to you and get it clarified.
Yeah. And the inspector person who was probably hired her, I mean, she was very thoughtful and nice, just obviously learning, but I mean, super great to talk to. I mean, she really cared. She wasn't just a, you know, heart-nose kind of like, you know, somebody. Not that way at all. I think she represents the county quite well, you know.
Commissioner Schrader, did you want to make any comments?
No, that was the same question I was going to ask, too. I wanted clarity on who was under what umbrella, county-state. It might be something that's mandated. We don't know. I don't know all the answers to that, but I know, Gary, you're looking.
Yeah, I mean, the business card is Health, Housing and Human Services, Clackamas County, Public Health Division, so.
Okay. We'll follow up with you, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, and maybe we can all learn something from this experience. Thank you.
Great, thanks for listening.
Absolutely, anytime. Thank you for coming. Okay, we have another blue card here. Is it Ms. Strawbridge? Strawbridge, please come up. Introduce yourself and your area of residence, and you will also have three minutes.
My name is Janice Strawbridge. I'm a Clackamas County resident. I work at Redland Station for Mr. Brower. I've been in the food and beverage industry for 40 years. I've had a valid OLCC card for 30. The young woman that came in yesterday handed me her ID. I glanced at it. There was no doubt in my mind that she was over 25 years old. No doubt. Like, the makeup, the way she dressed. At that point, when she turned around to leave the store, I looked, and I thought, oh no. I had a feeling, you know, just by her way she walked. Yeah, I just, I don't think it's right for them to be made up like that. Not at all. Not one iota. Uh-uh. So, yes.
You have a few more minutes. You're more than happy to use them. You don't have to.
Oh, I just...
But we appreciate your testimony.
We were just shocked, you know, that... Yeah. I personally don't wear makeup. If she had not been wearing makeup, perhaps, and I just, it was not okay. And I feel terrible, you know, as, you know.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's just not okay.
I appreciate that perspective, thank you.
Yes.
I'll say, you know, we want to make sure that we are able to ethically and responsibly enforce where we need to enforce, but we also are not, as a county, ever looking to be punitive or to come after small business owners and people trying to do it the right way. And so our staff, I know, is going to be committed and working with Gary to figure out how to navigate this for you guys. And, you know, it's really unfortunate that this experience maybe happened and that you guys went through this, but I just want to be empathetic to your concerns, and we hear you. And we know it wasn't easy necessarily to come before the Board of County Commissioners to share your experience, and so we really appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we also have a Zoom... Are we finished? Sorry, ma'am, you still have time. Are you finished? Thank you. I want to respect your time. Gary, I think we probably have somebody online if you remember correctly. Clerk, can you manage that for us? Thank you.
We do. We have several Zoom attendees. If you are attending online, I ask that you please now raise your hand if you wish to talk, and I will allow you to talk in the order I see the raised hands. First, I see a Mr. Dave Codwellotter. Apologies if that's a mispronunciation. I'll now allow you to talk.
Thank you, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please continue.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Dave Codwellotter. I am a Clackamas County resident living in Milwaukee with my wife and three children. One of the reasons we chose to raise our family in Milwaukee was to have a walkable community where we could easily access parks for our children to play. We were excited to see the timeline for the Milwaukee Bay Park improvements, including a playground, splash pad, additional shade trees, and picnic areas. And we were disappointed to learn that the project has been on hold for years now with no measurable progress. We were troubled to hear that over $2.4 million of grant money set aside for the park is eroding in buying power due to rising construction costs while the park is delayed. And time is running out for our kids to play and enjoy these park improvements while they are still kids. They're growing fast. I understand that there is tension between the County Commissioners and the city of Milwaukee because the city is seeking an answer to a legal question of whether the city could hypothetically choose to leave the district. My goal today is not to cause division or to cast blame, but to call for unity in working towards a solution. The recent NCPRD Systems Plan Survey has shown that Milwaukee Bay Park is the most visited outdoor park in the district, and therefore, I believe, should be worthy of a sense of urgency. I have read the written response from the County Commissioners regarding this matter, and I would like to ask for additional clarity on certain passages so that we may hopefully move beyond this impasse. You stated, quote, "Before continuing construction, the district needs assurances that should Milwaukee choose to depart, district investments are not removed from district ownership at the expense of the rest of the district's taxpayers," end quote. If Milwaukee did leave the district, many things could indeed change, but ownership and accessibility of the park would not. The park is owned by the city and would remain owned by the city whether or not the city leaves the district. The park is open to the public and would remain open to the public regardless of whether or not the city leaves the district. You also stated, quote, "NCPRD staff estimates that the district has expended over $1.1 million for the project since 2017 and do not want our substantial investment in Milwaukee Bay Park to be lost," end quote. Building the park to completion would be a public benefit to all the residents that you serve and would ensure that that $1.1 million that's already been spent on the design of the park goes towards tangible improvements. The only way that I can see this investment being lost is through inaction, not action. My question for the Commissioners, in the interest of transparency and your dedication to being fiscally responsible with FESS grant money, could you please clarify what you are concerned would be lost or removed if the park planning and construction were to resume and grant money released for spending? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. My mic is like super hot and echoey, I don't know. Give us a second. I just want to make... I think we can answer or clarify some of those questions that might come up with that testimony. If you want to stay logged in and listening, I think that after everyone's done with public testimony, we might be able to address some of those through a statement. And then, do I need to move my mic, or Commissioner Scholl?
Yeah. Vice Chair West, my recommendation is that we take the gentleman's questions, have them staffed, and then present him with a written response, because we want to make sure that the response to his questions today are accurate.
Yeah. And I think we're prepared to make a statement to some of these questions that might come up during public testimony, and so I'll open that up after public testimony, and then we may choose to also do that. Commissioner Scholl, my mic is better now, thank you. I appreciate it. Who is up next, Clerk, for public testimony?
Next, we have a hand raised by Mr. Andy Fisher. Who am I allowed to talk?
Andy, you have three minutes. Are you there? Mr. Fisher, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mr. Fisher. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, and thank you for letting me talk today. My name is Andy Fisher. I'm a resident of Milwaukee and have been for the last few years, in addition to previously residing in Milwaukee 13 years ago. I own and operate a local design-built general contracting and development company within the downtown Milwaukee neighborhood. I moved to Milwaukee and the historic district downtown specifically because of the river view, the waterfront parks, and the trolley trail. I have stayed and started to invest more time, effort, and resources into the region directly as a result of seeing the resolve and action of the good folks within the city, county, and regional government, along with its residents, who make the city and the region an amazing home and community that it is. The Milwaukee Bay Park and trolley trail are regional assets that have inspired myself, our design team, and our developers to pursue master plan concepts for the downtown and greater city renewal. We have been steadily partnering with NDAs, businesses, residences, and the city to pursue a unified identity for the cities and the region's downtown gem and for the greater city as a whole. We are excited to see what we can build and accomplish together. We have found that there is an overwhelming focus and passion from all parties involved to see responsible and sustainable development and growth within the region as a whole and in a unified effort with all parties and stakeholders involved. These focuses include a strong resolve to support in every way possible the NCPRD's 23-hour center, Clackamas County Recovery Campus efforts within the city and the region to begin better addressing the current public health crisis we are facing due to gaps in medical care and services to those most in need and marginalized within our community. The newly reformed Downtown Milwaukee Business Alliance has resolved to make supporting these efforts high upon their priority list and goal, and has tasked me with representing our support for your efforts today. We have also placed the completion of the approved Milwaukee Bay Park utilizing the funding that's already in place, high on our priority list. We see the park listed as NCPRD's own system plan as the most utilized and visited park in the region. That's clearly representing the will of the people in our region and within NCPRD district. We ask that our elected commissioners, who have heard this will and approved the funding for the park, to act now upon this public will and in the public's region's best interests by releasing these funds immediately and pursuing the completion of design and construction with immediacy and earnest. We ask that you commissioners here today to make a commitment to return to the table to discuss your concerns with unrelated cities and NCPRD businesses as our elected officials and representatives, and take up Mayor Beatty's invitation for at least two county commissioners to sit down with at least two Milwaukee council members to work in partnership towards resolution of unrelated matters and in a collaborative manner and with the understanding that further distractions do nothing to further the needs and the will of your constituents. We ask if you can take this opportunity to realign the region's focuses and needs on productive and collaborative efforts going forward. Thank you for your time and service in and for our community, and thank you for your for our community, and thank you for your efforts. We appreciate you and them.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I hope you can stay tuned for additional comments on this topic from the county after public testimony. Do we have anyone else, Clerk?
Again, if you are present on Zoom and you would wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. I currently see no hands raised. This is a final call for public testimony from those participating via Zoom to raise their hands if they wish to testify. I see none, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Clerk. Um, I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we'll move on to what's next. But Gary, I think that we should maybe make some statements regarding some of the concerns from the members that have of our community that spoke to us today. Could you please speak to the issue around Milwaukee Park?
Yes, happy to, Vice Chair. And Commissioners, you may comment, of course, after my comments. So, um, yes, many of the speakers outlined statements the county has already provided in writing, too many emails the board has received about this topic. A very short refresher. Milwaukee Bay Park is, of course, an amazing regional beneficial park. It already includes river access, a boat dock, lighted walking paths, restroom, benches, public art, historical and interpretive markers, and a large lawn space used for public gatherings. That already exists. What the speakers are speaking about is Phase Three of the Milwaukee Bay Park project. That Phase Three would add more amenities to the park. This effort, Phase Three, is still on the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District NCPRD Capital Improvement Project List. It is true, there are several external grants that are about to expire in a few months. That is accurate. However, the grants still exist. They're not gone yet. As you all know, as the public knows, NCPRD has the lowest tax rate of any equally-sized Parks District in the entire state of Oregon. It's the same tax rate as when the district was formed 34 years ago. It has not changed. Resources are stretched thin. There are parts of the district that have undeveloped parks or no parks at all, and the limited resources have to be used for the entire district. It is true that the city of Milwaukee and the Parks District, of which you're the governing body of Commissioners, we are waiting for the response of a legal matter to determine what is the proper authority to withdraw if the city chose to do that. And also, there was an effort between the city and the district to update the, it's called the Master Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and the district. And that work has also been on pause pending the legal results. So the issue that the speakers particularly raised today, it is true, the city of Milwaukee owns the park, of course. However, the district owns the amenities in the park, the benches, the play structures, the restroom, and the district performs planning, maintenance, and other functions. If the city ultimately did choose to withdraw from the district, then the district would have spent taxpayer dollars on amenities that are no longer within the district's responsibility. So it really comes down to a question of taxpayers, which they wish to do, for the use of their limited tax dollars within the entire district. You've heard from two speakers today. Thank them very much for their view. There are many other people who would probably give you a contrarian point of view from the unincorporated areas if they were here today. So all to say is, we are still working collaboratively with the city, the district and the city. We will resolve these issues hopefully as soon as possible. But that is my comments for you if you wanted to add to that.
I do have a question. When, when can we expect Gary, the legal opinion to?
Maybe our county council could ask that.
That's what I was wondering, Jane, if you have any idea. Where are we in that process?
It has been briefed. The Court of Appeals has not set a date for oral argument. The estimate our office is giving to the board is six to 12 months.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, and I, I do just want to make a, just one comment. It is a regional asset. Uh, I understand that. But again, I think, Gary, you framed it really well, that we've done a lot there for the citizens of Milwaukee and the region. What we're, uh, what's, what we're also trying to do is, in the unincorporated area, since they're paying into a tax base as well, that they get amenities too. So it's that struggle. And I'm not a big tax person, but I certainly think we ought to look at, seeing if the citizens would vote to raise the rate. And that's what I might suggest, because I think it's less of a not trying to get people the amenities regionally and for everyone, but it's about spreading it out between the unincorporated area and the cities, which we're the governance model for the unincorporated area, and the city is the government's model. So there's, there's, we've got to learn how to cooperate and figure this one out. But I think that's what the dilemma is, is really a lack of resources right now. And it would be a shame to let those grants drop. And I do want to remind people, the other thing we did many, many years ago when I was first here, um, as you know, in Milwaukee, we built a ball field that is now one of the regional ball fields as well, and that's in by the senior center. That was a huge undertaking with natural areas. Uh, we, we got a lot of pushback, believe it or not, for building a ball field for kids, because people were afraid of lights and noise. But because we integrated that project with a natural area as well as that ball field, we were able to do it. And I do think, I do think Milwaukee owns that land too, but we helped develop it. But I'll have to check on that. This was way back in 2003. So I just want to remind people, let people know, we really are interested in parks as a commission. We really want to see this as a regional, uh, and a regional framework, but we're trying to balance needs right now. So, um, I wish we could get this Court of Appeals thing done a little sooner, but there you have it. But thank you.
Question from Ms. Veto. This issue around Milwaukee leaving the Parks District, um, two judges have not sided with the city of Milwaukee and now we're, and, and both judges had very similar thoughts and opinions in their, in their ruling. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think, um, just to clarify, this is not the county's lawsuit. This was Milwaukee's lawsuit. It is Milwaukee's appeal.
And then, and now Milwaukee, after, um, two court cases about wanting to leave the district, is now going to the Court of Appeals? And so we're somewhat limited in our ability to speak right now and to work with the city? I know there has been a lot of efforts, but I'm kind of curious about, I know that we're.
My understanding is, is that the county is not contesting that Milwaukee can leave the district. The issue between the two entities is the statute governing how they leave. And, um, to your point, uh, the county, uh, the county's, uh, view of which statute applies was upheld in Circuit Court. Milwaukee has appealed that, and that is the issue before the Court of Appeals.
Okay. And Gary, isn't the, the current, um, city of Milwaukee subsidized pretty heavily right now, even without the additional improvements for Phase Three of Milwaukee Bay Park? They're subsidized at a tune of over $500,000 a year, um, right now. Is that right?
I don't have the number right in front of me, but.
Run that phrase.
The district supports the entire district, including the city of Milwaukee.
And I, I'll say this, is that I think, I want that part complete. I think we all do. That's the goal. And Phase Three would be lovely to happen. We have limited resources. And it's tough when you sit on the board that has a large district that's woefully underfunded. Um, and you have to be equitable with how you distribute these funds out. There, I remember when I was a new commissioner, a brand new commissioner, I went on a ride along throughout the district. And then we'd say, oh, Ben, that's Commissioner West, that's Park, you know. So I go, that's a park? That's the size of a conference room? And there's nothing on it. It's just a bear-like lot. Um, and so you go to other places that are considered park deserts.
No.
And those communities don't have anything near them. And so trying to figure out how to get to Phase Three, how to have a positive working relationship with the city of Milwaukee while they have us in a lawsuit, and then also trying to still figure out how to govern and bring those assets to areas of the Parks District that, that have been woefully underserved while all dealing with inadequate mileage rate is a predicament. Um, and I hear the frustration from the people who testified today. Uh, I know it's our, our desire as a board to navigate these kind of murky waters and figure it out. Um, but it, it's been quite complicated. So, uh, we're more than willing to continue to dialogue with citizens. We appreciate your, your comments today. And, um, I think there are a lot of valid concerns and questions. Maybe there are some of those we can get answered and figure out how to get more information out to the public regarding those valid questions that they brought forward today. Um, with that, we'll move forward. Um, and thank you everybody who testified, who took time out of your day or maybe out of your workday to, um, come speak to us. We really appreciate your words and testimony. Um, Gary, any good updates for us?
Uh, yes, next is county administrator update. That's me. I like to talk about the great work of our county employees. Today, I want to recognize our staff in Public and Government Affairs and Transportation and Development for their support of this past weekend's Stafford Hamlet's Family Farm Fest. The Stafford Hamlet hosts this every year for the last six years for the community. And in particular, here's what the Hamlet wrote. The Stafford Hamlet would like to relay the good work of county employees that are wonderful to work with and showed great support of our Family Farm Fest this past weekend. A large crowd of 650 people joined us for our sixth annual community building event. Clackamas County is a better place because of these employees. And these employees are from Public and Government Affairs, Todd Logan and Ed Nieto, and from Transportation and Development, Nouriz Herrera. So thank you to our team for helping support the Stafford Hamlet's Farmly Fam, Family Farm Fest. Next, potholes again. Once again, a resident from Lake Oswego wrote in about a pothole on Madrona Street in Lake Oswego, and our staff handled it quickly. And the person wrote in, thanks for coming out so quickly and filling those potholes. So a reminder that when Clackamas County learns about a pothole, we investigate each one within seven days and fix them. So it's on our county website, clackamas.us/transportation/roadconcern. And we're happy to fix those potholes as they occur. So thank you to our staff and our road crews in Transportation and Development. That is my update today. Vice Chair, back to you for Commissioner Communications.
Thank you so much, Gary. That's great news. Uh, thanks for sharing that. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Um, I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Shoal.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're up.
Oh, well, thank you very much and good morning, Clackamas County. I have some thoughts for you today on the upcoming general election and some ideas about fiscal responsibility and a more unified United States of America. The fact is, we will never build a lasting economic recovery by going deeper into debt at a faster rate than we ever have before. It took this nation 166 years to build a debt by the middle of World War II of $95 billion. But by 1976, Reagan complained about the Ford administration overspending, and in that year, the deficit was $80 billion. This year, the Biden administration is on track for a deficit of the federal budget of $1.6 trillion. That's 20 times bigger deficit than Reagan was concerned about in 1976. This November, I recommend voters look at candidates at every level of government, from school boards to the US Congress, and elect budget hawks and not tax and spend candidates. It's going to take everybody involved to get this fixed. Inflation is the cause of recession and unemployment, and we're not going to have real prosperity or recovery until we stop fighting the symptoms and start fighting the disease. There's only one cause for inflation, that's government spending more than it takes in. Our county budget is fine, but America must cut back on spending instead of spending the future production of our kids and grandkids and making them indentured servants to the past. Some say that 80% of the federal budget is uncontrollable, but the Congress made laws. The Congress can change the laws. And if Congress is unwilling to do that, then it's time to elect a new Congress in seven weeks from today or thereabouts. You can do just that. Another problem that voters must attack is that Washington has taken on functions that do not belong to Washington. Programs that the states should be concerned about, or the counties, such as the Article One, Section Eight, enumerated powers of the US Constitution, which limits the size and scope of the federal government. We must return back to respect and enforcing that part of the Constitution. And your voice now and in November will be required to do that. As we cut back on spending and keep more dollars in your pocket, I'd also like to take a moment to say that we need to take a look at our nation and our state, and sometimes our own county, in terms of a look at becoming a more unified people in America. We need to be more respectful. We can disagree with each other, but we need to do that in a way that's productive and effective so that the combined interests of all people can be achieved. So, one more thing, uh, I want to share with you today, and that is, I want to ask every member, every resident of Clackamas County to become involved with law enforcement. And recently, Measure 110, which was such a controversial measure, has been modified. Now, a program called Deflection, uh, is a option to people who are arrested for possession of those killer drugs. And in order to help our local police and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, I would like to ask everyone to become more observant in your neighborhood of any kind of use or sale of illegal drugs, and report them to your city police. In the case of the unincorporated parts of Clackamas County, please go to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website tip sheet and record on there what you have observed. That will begin to develop a case that the sheriff can begin to act on to correct things like drug houses and street sales of drugs. Everybody needs to become involved to make this modification of Measure 110 successful. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Schrader, you are up.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I had a lovely evening last night with our local VFW here in Oregon City. Um, I was there for the, um, honoring our heroes event because yesterday has been the 23rd anniversary of 911. And I think it changed all of us when that happened. And, um, uh, one of the things I shared was that I've lived all of my adult life since I was in my mid twenties in, in Oregon. But up until that time, about 21, 22, I actually grew up outside in Portchester, New York, which is just urban right outside of New York City. So my childhood was very urban and suburban. And where I lived, you could just hop on a train and go into New York City anytime you wanted to. And back then, it was, we did as kids, really, as high school kids, junior high school kids. And many of my class trips were actually for our English department. It was affordable then, where they'd bus us in and we'd get to see some Broadway shows. So I had quite a connection with New York City. It was part of, um, you know, my youth to be there. And even though I think now I'm really an Oregonian, I have fond memories. So when 911 happened, I immediately called, tried to get ahold of one of my friends from high school, my friend Jane, because I was worried. And she wasn't in the building, but she was next to the building. And she was one of the folks evacuated and had to get out pretty fast. And so I was, uh, feeling really worried about her. And the statement she made was, you know, if I'd gone in a different direction, I might have been, might have been harmed by that. But it really shook us up as the, as a nation, as I recall. And the morning it happened, I was actually at a leadership conference in Bend, Oregon. And it was a beautiful day. I don't listen to TV or radio in the morning. It's just too noisy. I just have to, well, you know, I'm slow in the morning. I just have to, well, you know, I'm slow in the morning. I want my coffee, I wanna look at a paper, you know, whatever. So, I got up, saw this beautiful day in Bend and went to the meeting. And I said, isn't it just a beautiful day out today? And they all looked at me as if I was, what? Like, and I go, what? It's sunny, it's nice. And they said, no. You know, so I didn't even realize until I went to that meeting that the Twin Towers had been attacked by terrorists. And it was personal to me in many ways because, like I said, that was memories from my youth, memories of being in the Big Apple and the New Yorker. But what was remarkable to me and was very meaningful that as I had to drive home from Bend to all the rural communities of Oregon, they had flags up along the whole way. And that meant a lot to me, I have to admit. And I felt, well, one of the things I would mention is that experience that we had, not just in New York, but as a nation in a way, unified us. And I think that we need to move towards unification again. I think we have to concentrate on what our values are rather than what our political ideologies or differences are. I think really, basically, in the end, we all do have the same values. We want our families to thrive. We want to live peacefully. We wanna be able to put food on the table. We wanna enjoy each other's company. We want to, you know, enjoy liberty and freedom here. So, if we concentrate on those larger issues, what we may disagree on, for example, is where we get there. And that's okay. So, another organization, I think I've mentioned this before, that I got involved with was Braver Angels. And they've been wanting to come talk to us, but I have to ask you guys if that's okay first. But what it is, is a group that brings conservatives, people you might consider conservative and liberal and so on and so forth altogether, so that they can just discuss their differences in community. Because one of the things we're missing these days, I think, is the notion of community building. When you lived in a community in a town and you were in the Kiwanis or Rotary, or all those kinds of civic infrastructures, you could really easily disagree politically. But you're all working, like, on the Rotary stuff together. You know, you're all, like, doing work to improve your community. And I think we've lost that in many ways. And sometimes I think it's really also the electronic media that doesn't help that because it gets us, it personalizes things. Things get out there that are harmful to us personally with things that shouldn't be said and that we get, you know, whatever. And I wish that people would consider, I don't think that we can change that totally. But I do think that as elected officials, whatever our differences are, if we have the value of community building, which I really think all of us do here on this stage, Commissioner Shoal and you, Ben, my friend, and myself and our other two colleagues that aren't here, it would help ease the tension that we feel right now. And anyway, that was just my reflections after what I experienced from 911 and what I've been thinking about lately. Because remember, Gary, you started out with potholes today. And I always remind people that potholes are not political. And you don't know how many happy people we have because those potholes are like, that's the first thing everybody always asks about. So, that's my, I was grateful to be there yesterday. It was lovely to see everybody. And at the Circle of Honor, that was done a number of years ago by a Vietnam veteran who I'm still in touch with. And the folks who were there last night were largely Vietnam vets at this point. The other thing I did yesterday all day today, and Ben, you were there too, we met with the Association of Oregon Counties. And this is the document I'm showing you today because I have to tell you, in the last few years, this organization has professionalized to the extent that we are now becoming, I think, a powerhouse, not just at the national level, but here locally with our own legislature. I had the opportunity to be president in a very difficult time. Gary, you remember, kept me up at night. We were on the verge of bankruptcy. We had a executive director who was a great man, dear friend, but budgeting wasn't his specialty area. And he didn't have the lineup in place to get it more professionalized. We had to push really hard to, it was a little tough on me because we had to push really hard to do a search. I had some folks that just wanted to hire their, you know, internal kind of friends. And I said, you know, guys, we can't do it that way. We really need to do a search to get a real clear idea of what we need to do as this organization. So, eventually, we would end up with something like this where it's clear, it's steady, it's transparent. We can see, we can see all the numbers. We know we're fiscally sound and that there's a, you know, three to five-year plan of how we're gonna spend money and what we're gonna be doing with the rest of our things. So, it was a tough year for me. But in the end, we did do a search. We got Gina Nichols, which, she's the first woman to ever run AOC. And she's doing a dynamite job. And I'm really, I'm really, it's really nice to have her as a dear friend. And I wanna thank the association for allowing me to keep serving on the National Association Board. So, that's my last comment. I wanted to let you know, I did go to my meeting yesterday in between the AOC meetings, through the Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee. I am no longer the chair, I am happy to let you know. Chair Angela Conley, she's a commissioner from Hennepin County, Minnesota. I had that chairmanship for two years, my term was up. And so, yesterday, we got a briefing from Housing, Urban Development Section 108 Legacy. This is all bureaucrat talk. But basically, there are some programs that we can take a look closely at some of their grants and see if we can have some flexibility in how we do some of our housing plans. We had a briefing from Aaron Schreuer, who is the Housing Lead of the National Economic Council in the White House. And then Mike Matthews, who's a great young man, our legislative director, gave an update of what's been going to be happening in DC. And there's not gonna be much happening, guys, until after the elections are over. That became extremely clear to everybody. So, we're gonna be kinda just circling the, you know, the airport here for a while until we wait and see what happens in the November elections. And then I think Congress will pick up again and start doing their jobs. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I, my comments are a little different this week. We, Commissioner Shoal and Commissioner Schrader did mention our November elections, and they're very important. We're all very acutely aware. Some of us are very much caught up in big presidential elections and things in far, faraway places that do impact Oregon, but probably not as much as your county commissioners do. The government closest to you impacts your life the most. It's clear to me, we fill your potholes. And I've said this before many times, that potholes is also just an analogy for any local problem that we're all trying to solve from homelessness, addictions, crisis, public safety issues, all the other things that we do, tolling, traffic stuff, you know, all the things, making sure your toilets flush and that the waste goes where it needs to go. All these things impact your life probably a little bit more than a lot of the stuff happening around us in the big nation that we are. And I've had the honor to serve with two of my elected colleagues that are up for reelection. And I don't think it's common for another elected to speak about this from the dais, but I'm going to today. I'm gonna talk about Chair Smith and what it's been like to serve with her as a brand-new commissioner. And I'm gonna talk about my colleague to the right, Commissioner Shoal. I wish we were all here today, but this is what I planned on talking about. This is the group we have. I'll start with Chair Smith. I think Chair Smith should be reelected as the chair. I think that she has navigated us through some pretty troublesome times. I don't think every county has somebody with that kind of steel spine to get us through epidemics, wildfires, evacuating our cities where it looked like Armageddon in the sky and we're all choking on the smoke, ice storms, heat domes, transportation, issues that, around tolling, navigating the healthcare crisis and the human crisis that we face around housing and homelessness. I don't know if we could have done that without her steady leadership. It's funny, you serve with four people and regardless of party, because we're nonpartisan, we all have very different personalities. I bet you parents out there who have kids with different personalities were like, they're so different, right? And we still have to figure as a family how to move forward and get it done. This board showed up and done that. And right now, it's objectively true, and I can prove it, I'm not saying anything that's hyperbolic. Clackamas County is probably the best performing county on major metrics in the entire state of Oregon of all 36. And despite all the chaos we faced in the metro area and the difficulties, especially sharing a large 10-mile border with Portland, we continue, despite people maybe trying to throw barriers in our way, to chug along and do good local government, filling your potholes, whatever problems we face together, and get it done. Chair Smith was the leader during that. She was the leader. Don't always agree with Chair Smith. We sometimes might have a few arguments here and there. Sometimes they might get heated, but we get the work done. And I don't know what the plan is for her opponent. I don't understand what he wants to do differently because things are going really well. And maybe we should listen, and that's why we have an election process, is to listen. But I believe that we haven't had a lot of continuity between our chairs since we've had the elected chair in Clackamas County. It comes and goes and swings back and forth. I think this county is on such a good track right now, we need some continuity. And I am publicly supporting Chair, Clackamas County Chair Tootie Smith to be reelected for chair again. And I hope that when you get your ballots here pretty soon, that you will bubble her name and that you will bring her back to serve with us so we can continue to do the good work. And we'll continue to strive to be better for you. But Chair Smith needs to continue to be the chair of Clackamas County. And so, whatever little influence I have as an elected that serves with her, I wanna make sure that I'm sharing that with the residents and telling them how I feel about it publicly. We all have a stake in this. Commissioner Shoal is next. I mean, we're all so different in our personalities.
Hey, can I say something else to you? I just wanted to say that I've worked with Tootie twice when she was here, you know, the first time. And then, you know, again, we had another change to here. And we've become good friends. We're politically different, but who cares? We really enjoy each other. I have a lot of fun with her. And, and you know, she gets a little, you know, I've had times Tootie has not been happy with me, but I don't, that doesn't bother me at all. I do think that continuity and leadership, quite frankly, is important at this time. I've been here for many years. I still seem to keep getting back. But I think that when we're at our best as a group, and that includes Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Shoal, you, Ben, you're hysterical to work with. I love you, a lot of fun. But I do, I admire Commissioner Smith's, as you said, steel spine, you know? I told her once, I hope this isn't totally inappropriate, but I said, "Tootie, you really are just a can of whoop-ass." There you go. And that's what I like about her because my style's a little different, but that's what it means. You know, we all have different styles, we all have different ways of viewing things. We have some political differences, but if we can, again, work in community, we've gotten a lot done, really, for the citizens of this county that we should all be very proud of. And we should all let folks know that we respect the leadership that we've had in this county. That's all I gotta say.
Yeah, thank you. And then Commissioner Shoal, you work really hard for this county. And you don't even, you just come in and do the work. And it doesn't matter if you get any accolades, if your name is noticed. You just show up and plug, and just plug away, man. It's like, I feel like I'm watching a fullback just drive the ball down the field, right? And you're gonna get hit by the defense along the way. But Shoal just gets back up every single morning and drives the ball down the field for Clackamas County. And we haven't always agreed. I'm sure that we could have some heated debates. We may not always approach things the same way. But you've been a steadfast worker for this county, and you deserve to come back. And we need the continuity on this board. I would ask the electorate to judge my colleagues based on the outcomes of this county. If we look like Portland or Multnomah County, please fire us. You should be up, this room should be filled if we looked anything like Portland or Multnomah County. We work for you all, we work for you. I was telling some, I think, and I think sometimes electeds in this state, it's just repugnant how they treat the electorate. It has such disdain for hard-working families. They just turn their nose up at people that have to get up at 5:00 in the morning to make things work in this community. And then they ask you all to pay for the dysfunction as they watch your urban areas in state just go down the tubes. And then they say, not only are you gonna pay for it, we're gonna make sure that we continue to create an environment that's hard for your family to live in. If we operated that way in Clackamas County, y'all should fire us. But we're a nonpartisan board, and we have been principled and stayed in our lane and been very effective about stopping really bad policy that would hurt the community in Salem and in DC. And we've been a firewall against bad ideas and value systems that don't match our own. And there's a reason why people wanna live in Clackamas. I just had breakfast this morning with an attorney, a professional attorney. His wife is a doctor. And they just, they chose Clackamas and they love it here because of how it works. They were like, and then his colleague, who if I said his name right now, everybody would know, who is closely connected to the status quo and the powers that be here in Oregon, he moved to Clackamas County because he didn't like Multnomah County and what it was like to live there and raise his family there. They're now neighbors in Lake Oswego. But there's a reason why people do that. It's because you're, like I said, your government closest to you impacts your life the most. And I think this is a pretty unified board. We're doing some big things, leading in big spaces. We're not always gonna get it right, but we're gonna try. And here's a couple of reasons why Clackamas County is outperforming the rest. Well, we can't seem to get a deflection center up in Multnomah County. And it continues to flounder, really getting traction on addressing the crisis around addiction, the fentanyl crisis and homelessness. And we still see people languish in our streets and not get the care they deserve. Clackamas County has steadily made immense progress in that area that is actually replicatable and has got noticed by the entire state and region. And now, we're talking about building a multi-acre recovery campus, an entire system of care that provides what people need. And people are getting off our streets, are getting whole again, they're being restored back to community. That should be rewarded by your vote. We're the eighth safest county in the entire state. There's 36 of us. We're a big county too, but out of all the big counties, we are the safest by the Oregon State Police data. And we're the eighth safest. So, a lot of counties much smaller than us or even more rural. They're not as safe as Clackamas County. But we put a value on public safety, the rule of law, and the ability for us to live in harmony with one another and then holding those accountable that are trying to hurt our community. We value law enforcement. We've done it with our pocketbooks, we've done it with our statements, we've done it with our policies. We have a culture that's pro-law enforcement. Not every county is like that in Oregon. When the state tried to come and put draconian tolling on 205, that would absolutely devastate Clackamas County. Who came to the rescue for the county, for our neighbors? It was the Clackamas County leadership and hard work and innovation that galvanized all 16 cities in this county to push back. And we, they've had to kind of pull away twice now. We've had two significant pauses. Now, I'm not saying it's gone, the fight's over. But tolling's not happening right now because your local government stuff, or you was this bored. I can go on and on about all amazing, great work we do. But I wanna publicly say, and maybe this isn't the most popular opinion to some, but that's okay. We can talk about it. Commissioner Shoal needs to be reelected. And he has earned it. And he has been a champion for this county and has risen through a lot of stuff to continue to show up for you all. We need to show up for him at the ballot box. Commissioner and Chair Tootie Smith needs to be reelected. I appreciate her opponent's service to this county over many years, but I don't believe now is his time. It is Tootie's time to continue to still lead us, and we need her fortitude at the helm. I would urge you to cast your vote for Tootie Smith. Oh, and my comments about my colleagues and the election coming up with that. I can't, I wish I would have actually already made these comments before 9/11. We all just went through 9/11. Commissioner Schrader, I really appreciate your comments. It's a hard day for me. It happened 23 years ago. I remember exactly where I was, like everybody else that lived through it. I remember how I felt. I remember how it shook me. I remember how it shook me to my core. And then later that day, I found out my friend Eric was in the second plane that hit the It's personal, I never want to forget it, because it shook the world to its core, and I still feel it today. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Shoal, I believe that you served our country overseas after that horrific attack on our nation. Eric wasn't the only soul we lost that day. We lost approximately 3,000 other Americans. I can replay in my mind those that were on the flight that was supposed to hit, I believe the White House or some of those in DC, and how they sacrificed their own lives to continue to save others in this nation. My son doesn't know about 9/11, except what he learned in school. He wasn't born yet, which is weird, because it still feels like yesterday. We saw smoke and despair and chaos and destruction fill New York City, but brave men and women in uniform, first-hand responders and those in the armed forces ran to danger without a thought, to like, make sure that they could try to save those that were in harm's way. And the world's not been the same since then, and I hope that we can find a place of unity to continue to promote national security, that we can come together and remember what our values are around liberty and freedom, what brought us together, you know, our better angels at that time, Commissioner Schrader. And we can come together and prevent that from happening in the future, and be unified enough that if something horrific was like that, that was like, like that was ever to happen again, we could stand together again and push back against it. So, and we lost many men and women overseas in the conflicts in the Middle East after 9/11. We just pulled out of Afghanistan, which was just a few years ago, right? Like, that was all started from 23 years ago. So, I would ask that, you know, if you got busy and life happened yesterday, that's okay, but take time to remember the sacrifice and what we all went through as a nation. It was a tough time. So, I wanted to make sure I said that. And I'll end with this, District Day Meeting was great. What that means with AOC, like Commissioner Schrader said, is all of the metro commissioners and our legislators get together for a day, and we work on putting forward local policies. Or basically, what happens is, those kind of commissioners get to tell the legislators to stop giving us unfunded mandates, and to stop doing this thing and that thing that hurts counties, and maybe like, what the perspective is on the ground and how we can do better. It was a productive conversation yesterday with a number of representatives and senators. And Martha and I were there the entire day, and so, that was, I think, a good event. And if any of my colleagues have anything else to add or say, Commissioner Shoal, please.
I'd just like to say thank you for your encouragement this morning. You know, every day I wake up as a commissioner, and the first thing on my mind is, what can I do today to protect families in Clackamas County and small business? What can I do to hold down the cost of government while supporting effective core services to the people of Clackamas County? That's what I'm here for. And like you mentioned, government closest to the people is the most important government. And so, I think the role of county commissioner is a very, very big, has a very big potential to improve the quality of life of people of Clackamas County. And I'd like to just thank you for your effective ability for rational thought, your sense of justice, and it's been a pleasure to work with you too, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, remember, not left, not right, but forward, not right, not left, but forward. That's what we got to concentrate on. As you said, we're the basics of local government, because we are the closest to the people. And that's the reason why I want to stay. I goodness never want to go back to the legislature again, or any further. This county government's some of the best governance model, and it's just the place to be. But thank you, guys.
Well, if there's no further business, I know we've had a lot to say in this meeting. And if there's no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.